Good evening, everybody. I want to call the order. This is January 4th, 2022. Harris County Board of Commissioners made a call of order, and Commissioner Andrew is going to start the presentation.
Thank you. Do you have a prayer for this? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for your many blessings. We thank you, Lord, that we live in this beautiful community. We appreciate all that you've done for us, Lord. We pray that you would bless each of us tonight, help us to make good decisions, Lord, lead not to our own understanding but to come to you for wisdom. We pray that you would protect our citizens, Lord, our law enforcement officers, those, Lord, who take care of us. We praise you for all of this and your blessings to come in Jesus' name we pray.
Please join us with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening are minutes from our regular session of December 7th of 2021. And we did not have a meeting on December 21st of 2021. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
I will second that. Is there any other discussion? All those in favor? The next item on our agenda this evening is an organization of its commission. During this meeting, nominations in the form of a motion are made and votes are taken regarding the following: chairman election, vice chairman election, county attorney appointment, and our county clerk for one. Are there any motions?
I'll make the motion that Andrew Turner remain chairman for the 2022 year.
I'll second that.
All those in favor? Motion carries. I'd like to make the motion that Ron Britt remain the vice chairman for the 2022 year. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All right. A motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries. And for county attorney appointment, Mr. Russell Britt, I'd like to make the motion that we keep Mr. Brits our county attorney for the year.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries. And for county clerk appointment, is there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we keep our county clerk, National Michael, for the next 30 years. I know we can't do that, but for the least, nothing to her retirement.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I think you have a second, by the way. Well, understood. We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is an appearance of citizens. And Mr. Bill Crowell and Mr. Christie Bush are here. They both request to be on the agenda to thank the board for participating in the 5311 transportation program.
Hi. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you, Dr. Andrew, for making this possible for me. I just want to say thank you for being foresighted, caring, and concerned about the citizens of Harris County. You set aside $50,000 to use as save money for grants. This is awesome. I brought this to Dr. Andrew's attention because I fell and broke my knee, my leg, in five places. I was at Piedmont Hospital, and I called to ask for transportation. They wanted the transportation company $300 for a round trip from Piedmont Hospital to Wayville Hall. I was astounded. I called up Talbot County, which is only about a half mile from 208 from my house. I said, "How much do you charge?" $10? That's for a round trip, sir. I said, "10 dollars? When can you pick me up?" I gave my address. "Oh, we can't do that. You live in Harris County." I said, "I'll pay you $20." "Can't do it. You live in Harris County." Now, I've thanked you, and I'm gonna put an idea for you. Why do counties have to compete against each other? Talbot County is a very impoverished county compared to our county here. Why can't the two counties work together? I've been told that before grants get settled, it's 18 months to two years before we would have transportation here in Harris County. But Talbot County, I've checked them. They only have maybe two, three, four people in their buses. Why can't we work with Talbot County? Frankly, my time is ticking much faster than your time. I'm 84 years old. I still drove here. But anybody in our county that only has one car and it breaks down is in my position. They need transportation to doctors for food? I just want to ask you a question. And anybody who listens to me, how many doctors do you have now? Well, it could be a heart doctor. It could be a lung doctor. As a male, you understand what kind of a doctor I would have to have? So you understand. Dennis, do you like groceries? All these are provided by a transportation that you are electing to support. I'm so proud of you. I really am. And I would like to yield the rest of my time to the bushes, and I would like to say goodness.
And I also want to thank you because we are an aging community. Christie recently fell off her hip and pretty put us on a hard ship for transportation. If something happened to me when I couldn't drive or something, who would be totally needs such transportation as pending? And I would give the right to thank you all. I really appreciate what you've been doing. Thank you.
I worked with General Health. The only transportation that was available to my clients wasn't if they were on Medicaid. If they're in Medicare, they got no help. They didn't find a home or a doctor. There are a lot of people in this county that are not paying. And therefore, we'd have clients who would try to find alternate transportation. And the students were paying more than their neighbors to bring for me going to give my family a first bill of course. So this is something that's been needed for a long time. And I'm grateful that you came out to do this.
Thank you.
Randy, when will we know all the details of implementation?
Well, actually, on the item number 13 of the agenda is a part of that to make the county part of the Lower Chattahoochee Transit Authority so they can operate the 5311 program on our behalf. So, and that requires local legislation. So we're getting ready for the general assembly beginning in a few days to add the county to this agency that will operate this bus system for us. So I would say we can totally have bus service as early as maybe six months at best. But again, we rely, VOT, the Georgia Department of Transportation, to provide buses. And I think the Lower Chattahoochee Transit Authority is actually trying to secure used buses until they can get new buses. Because you know, with the supply chain issues we're having, vehicles are very, very difficult to obtain now. So the RVRC along with the Lower Chattahoochee Transit Authority, where we're trying to get this program going up and running as fast as we can. But if it's up and running in six months, I think that would be very, very good.
Well, they're trying to get buses or vans?
Vans, vans. They call them mini buses, but they're really vans.
Well, anything's gonna be a help.
Yes.
You know, when you don't need transportation, you seem to just not even think about it. You need it. Thank you all. Thank you.
We have nothing under old business this evening. So the next item under new business this evening is our presentation of our FOE, June 30th, 2021, annual audit from Robinson Grimes and our foot Chastain, our finance officer, Officer Alonzo Paul, Stephen Boynton, Robinson Grimes, are here this evening to share their findings with us.
Lord Commissioners, another year down. Overall impression, very, very positive document. Some counties are dealing with financial struggles during the time of COVID and things. You know, we're positive and luckily, we're not. We're seeing some of the opposite sides. Our laws, Splos, our records. We've had CARES and ARP money given to us. Almost $5 million, a little more than $5 million in factoring in airport and some other funds that we've gotten in that are gonna help, that have helped offset the general fund costs. And in the future, I want to help offset some of those. So we're in, we're in very good financial shape. So a couple of points of emphasis that I want to point out that were within the audit. We have unrestricted fund balance in the general fund. It's roughly $20 million. That's about 75% of the budgeted 2022 budget expenditures, meaning we've got about eight to nine months of working capital at this point. As a point of reference, back in 2017, I first started looking at that, that number was 36%. That number was a little bit hard to work with when we were, we were looking at meeting some payrolls and some projects that we had at that point in time. So we're in a position now. We're ready for some projects. We're ready for some other things that can have a rudder in the bin. Also, I might also use the 2017 as a reference point because I started looking at our outstanding borrowings, our long-term debt that we have. At 630 this year, we have approximately 17.7 million in long-term debt. That's revenue as bonds, that's GPO loans, that's capital leases that we have, our net pension liabilities, things of that nature. Back then, that number was almost $30 million. So we cut that amount in half also. You know, some of that, some of that borrowing can be advantageous in times of low interest rates. So just keep that in mind that we have a very low debt ratio at this point. And it's gotten smaller. Also this year, we had a single audit because we spent some federal money. The CARES money that we had, we spent about $550,000 of that. Plus, we had some, the new water meters, the ready-to-read meters, automatic meters that we have. We spent about $245,000 towards those new meters that we've been installing. So we had a single audit that had a little bit of time to the audit. But when we were looking and doing some pre-planning for the upcoming budget, these, these points of reference that I talked about, the nine months of working capital, we just had the implementation of the compensation study. We're probably gonna be looking at probably, I don't know for sure, it changes every year, but double-digit increases in health insurance are probably looking like they're probably back to the norm that they were with COVID and everything being around. So we've got that. Inflation looks like it's about to set in. So we're gonna have those adjustments. You know, like I said, we've got 3.4 million that you guys have budgeted from that ARP money to be spent by 2026. So that cash is gonna be there, ready to spend for a while. And you guys have the projects set up to do that. Also, we just committed ourselves to $1.3 million for the Northwest Harris Business Park. That, you know, that can be from Splos, I think that you guys have decided on that. So we have some, some costs coming up that are gonna eat into those amounts. But so our healthy financial situation, we're in a good spot to take all those. Even on the proprietary side, the business type side, the waterworks, the solid waste, the ones that continue to have healthy operating incomes. Waterworks actually increased their, their net position this year by about a million dollars. That was due to slight water, slight water rate increase and just some of the projects that they've had in the past. They finished those, and that spending was down as compared to prior years. The county manager, Mr. Dowling, and I have been keeping a close eye on Splos. We've completely finished Splos 14. The funds we have available now in Splos for 2019 along with the two Splos that we have. But like I said, the loss in Splos, I think this past month that Mr. Dowling's pulled the numbers that we were looking at are record highs by a long shot. You know, we think that's probably people shopping them on instead of going out more. Does that hang around? We don't know. But right now, it's a record highs, and it has been for, gosh, going, going maybe plus to a year now. One other thing, we have one finding. It's the, Stephen, Mr. Boynton's can talk about that that we have. But we, we're down from, in 2015, when I got here, we had five financial statement findings. Or when I got here, we were working on those audits. There were five findings. Now we're down to that one. It's the segregation of duties. We're working each year to get closer to relieving that. But every time I come up here, Commissioner Andrew is always asking me, you know, "What keeps me up at night? What in this book keeps me up at night? What stresses me out?" To be honest with you, this is the first time I can really get up here and say there's nothing in this book that stresses me out. What stresses me out at this point is the economy around us, the inflation that looks like it's gonna spike up. If you look, the one thing in here, our interest returns went from $220,000 down to $15,000 overnight. I mean, interest rates just have tanked this year. And we, you know, we tried to, we have all this liquid cash that we have sitting around, but there's not a lot of investment options that we as a county have that can really get those, especially with where interest rates are at this point. But that, you know, those are the, other than that, there's nothing else in this book. Everything in this book is, is positive at this point. I think you guys probably got a chance to kind of look through here. So if you have any questions for me specifically of anything that you've looked at, we can take a look at it.
And the interest rates that you're talking about in the returns, our money's in Georgia Fund One.
Correct.
What about all of this cash, the federal money and all of that? Is it in that fund also?
It's, it's not in Georgia Fund One just because we're getting a better rate of return just through our standard banking accounts right now that we offer in Georgia Fund One.
That's unusual.
That is unusual, very unusual. Because you remember when we first moved to Georgia Fund One, we were getting really good returns, almost double, tripling what we could get from the bank. Now it's almost opposite of that. So like I said, if you look in here, our investment numbers, we have more cash and cash equivalents than we do sitting in investments right now for that specific purpose. But this is, we're not making anything out of it sitting over there. So, so that cash that we have, we're maxing out what we can get, but it's not much at this point.
So some of the projects that we have that we plan on doing, like the Buddhist park, an EMS station, helping with Mercy Medical, other things that we have projects. If we do all these projects, which we hope that we're able to do, you don't think that this would be, it shouldn't hurt us too bad because we have enough, as you said, $20 million. We got enough that we could do that. Spend all that money to help build stuff in the county, help the citizens without really depleting and putting us back where we were back, as you said, back in 2017.
No, I didn't. Moving forward those projects at this point would put us back at a working capital rate that I think, if we talk about all these projects that we're looking at, of that five to six-month range, which is kind of where the sweet spot that we want to be. And that's what we, when we had first talked about increasing the mileage rate, before we knew we were gonna get five to five and a half million dollars from the federal government, that was the spot that we were, we're looking to get. So you do some of these projects, that puts us right back in that, in that range. So we'll, we'll still be in good, healthy condition.
How many employees added to your department would it take to get rid of that binding, do you suppose? I mean, one, two?
That's a...
I know it's a segregation.
See, I have a matrix that, you know, certain things you cannot do, you know, if someone takes in cash, goes to the bank recon, does a, you know. I would tell you a lot, but every time I add, every time I add somebody and I have, I can pull somebody else in there, it takes one less off of there.
Yeah. Maybe I need to add some.
If you really wanted to get it, but I could, you know, I could sit down and show you the certain spots where we still, we have mitigating controls in place. And Steve, I could probably speak to that.
Wasn't most small governments have that binding every year anyway?
Probably 95, 99% of yes.
It is a typical binding for governments our size. Not that we like capital binding, but it is a typical one.
That was very, very difficult to get, to get off of there. Well, I'm glad we're down to one because I think, you know, three, four years ago, we were, what, four or five? Yeah, five. Five, yeah. Yeah, we just gotta keep working on it progress.
Yeah, that progress.
Anybody need like a, a, a...
Because we're instead, we need to hire 20 people now.
Briefly, I would say we do have a clean opinion. We do have a clean opinion on these financial statements. There's a clean opinion on compliance with the federal awards. And we perform walkthroughs on various departments and constitutional offices each year just to gain an understanding of internal controls, make sure we don't see anything that's glaring and looks like a problem. We've gone out to the sheriff's office. We've been to the courts, public court magistrate, tax commissioner, prison, community center was an example this year. And, and we have not seen anything financially. I mean, because we don't go over every single control that goes on, you know, for whatever the normal processes throughout the day. But as far as management of cash and income and expenses, we haven't come across anything that, that gives us heartburn or causes any concerns there. So no, no issues this year.
So even though you're doing a general audit, pulling the samples from every, every department, you're saying that you're taking a closer look at some this year?
That's correct, yes. And that's, and that's something that is just, is just part of, part of our standards. A lot of our work, we do it based off of the financial statements, but then we will go in the exciting ones and stuff like that as well. But yeah, this is, this is a good audit. And I mean, I think the numbers speak for themselves. But as far as the process of the audit and any issues, we do not have issues actually. I thought all that went through really well. And I think that, you know, Mr. Chastain, you're not, and Mr. Dowling, and everybody who just has to get a really good sense of answers here. So I think this represents the county.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Can we? Is there a motion?
I believe the motion we accept this audit.
I have a motion. Second? All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is ACCG 401A Defined Contribution Plan Documents Resolution to Comply with IRS Code. From time to time, the county is required to restate its ACCG 401A Defined Contribution Plan. The restatement incorporates changes to the plan that must be made to reflect changes in the law and to protect the plan's tax-qualified status under the IRS Code. Mr. Bates was here earlier this evening and spoke with us about our DC plan documents. In that final discussion, we were looking at a motion and a vote to approve the restated ACCG 401A Defined Contribution Plan Adoption Agreement and a resolution to adopt the restated DC plan. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I will second that motion. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing for a transmit draft capital improvement element, CIE, of the impact fee program to the River Valley Regional Commission, RVRC, for review. As part of the impact fee adoption process, Wood has prepared a draft capital improvements element, CIA, based on the methodology report that was approved by the board on October 5th of 2021. All the CIE contains population, housing units, and job growth data from now until 2045. The CIE also has a section for each service impact fees which will be used and approved. Those services are parks and recreation, sheriff's office, and jail, fire protection, EMS, and Eaton 911. Each section has an introduction, service area, level of service, current inventory of assets, future demand of services, and future cost of their services. The CIE also contains a five-year community work program, 2022 to 2026, that outlines specific capital items to be constructed, the year of construction and cost estimates if the impact fee ordinance is adopted. The draft CIE was emailed to all affected departments for their review prior to the January 4th, 2022, public hearing. Randy, do we have Wood on the conference this evening?
Yes, we do.
I don't know if he has anything he'd like to share with us.
He's, he'll have to do a presentation. Good evening, Mr. Commissioners. Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, there's a high note on the agenda.
Thank you for allowing me to speak remotely. I promise it's in our mutual best interest this time, and I look forward to being back at the next opportunity of commissioning. I do have several points to make in the process of this transmittal hearing. I'll go through a series of points and then take a pause each time in case there are any questions as I go through.
Commissioner Walton?
Yes, sir.
We have another public hearing that's supposed to start at 7:00. I did not realize we were so close to 7:00. So if we could just pause this presentation until after that public hearing and then we'll be back in touch with you.
Absolutely. I'll be here and ready for whatever time works best for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll take a short break until 7:00. And at 7:00, we will start our public hearing. Good evening, everybody. So our rezoning applications, public hearing procedures. I will call the meeting to order. After that, we will have a reading of the application. Followed by that, there will be a presentation by the applicant or his or her representatives. Once that is completed, there will be comments made by individuals in favor of the application. After that, we'll have comments of individuals in opposition to the application, which will then be followed by a summary or rebuttal of the applicant. Once that is completed, I will close the public hearing, and then the board will take action. Any individuals in which speak the proceedings will get a five-minute timeframe. Our county manager will keep up with your five minutes. That five minutes is your time and your time alone. You cannot share it with anyone. I just ask that everybody be respectful of everyone and sit quietly and listen and not interrupt. So I will call this public hearing to order. There are actually two applications. We will read them at once. It is a joint use of property. The applicant is Edgar Houston Builder, Inc., 8219, North Crossing Court, Forts, Georgia, for rezoning of 67.78 acres, map 033, part of parcel 017, land lot 9, land district 19. The location is north side of Mountain Hill Road and west of I-185 in Forts. And I'd like to rezone from A-1 to R-1, which is single-family residential. The present use is timberland. The proposed use is single-family homes. The planning commission recommendation was approval with conditions that all lots have a minimum of two acres outside of any floodplains. Staff recommendation was for approval. The second piece of property has the same applicant, Edgar Houston Builder, Inc., 8219, North Crossing Court, Forts, Georgia. And this again is rezoning 314.55 acres, map 033, part of parcel 017, land lot 9, land district 19. map zero three three, part of parcel zero one seven, land lot ten, land district nineteen. Its location is north side of Mountain Hill Road and west of I-185, Fortson. Again, rezoning from A-1, which is agricultural forestry, to R-1, single-family residential. Present use is timberland, proposed use is single-family homes. And again, the planning commission recommendation was approval with condition that all lots must have a minimum of two acres outside of any flood plains. Staff recommendation was approval. Mr. Henson?
Good evening. How are you guys? Tallahassee, roughly a huge home. Five months ago, we came in and submitted a rezon couple tracks up off of Mountain Hill Road, the western portion of that property, from A-1 to R-1. We proposed a ninety-six unit development with two-plus acre lots. Out of those two-plus acre lots, we've got nineteen lots that fall between three and ten acres, with the larger portion of that being five and above. You have several, several, six lots that are between ten and twenty acres. You have a couple of lots that are above twenty acres. At that time, we were told that, you know, we would, we would have a condition on the rezoning where we would have to add two acres of each lot in, or outside of flood zone. That was something we were unaware of. You know, we put this together following the county rules. We didn't know that that would be a condition put on us. As we looked at that, we went back, and we'll lose twenty-four lots from there. This time, you know, twenty-four lots, losing that would make the deal, make the project viable. That would be something we would be able to do. We need a little bit more time to kind of go back, and we had holidays after, after we had the planning commission meeting, and the holidays, you know, we really kind of need to work with the engineer and see how that shakes out. I'd be happy to answer any questions about the project in whole. You know, again, we built houses across Harris County, built new buildings across Harris County for quite a few years, and this is the first time we've heard of that, that condition.
Would you still like to rezone it tonight?
We would still like to rezone, yes, ma'am. We just need a little bit more time.
He said they need more time, so.
You should still hold the public hearing.
Are there any individuals this evening who would like to speak in favor of the applicant? Are there any individuals who would like to speak in opposition this evening? If there already one that would like to speak in opposition, please raise your hand, and we'll try to start on my left, your right, and work our way across the room.
Yes, ma'am.
And as, as everybody comes to order, if you please just step to the microphone and state your name and address.
Megan Gunther, thirteen seventy-nine Farms, Mulberry. I would like to say that I'd like the planning commission's recommendation to not include flood plains in the two acre minimums. The fact that they might lose twenty-four lots due to that speaks to the quality of the lots that they're giving these new residents. So I would hope that you would stay in harmony with that suggestion and let them rework the floor, their lots that they are going to have to rework, rework the lots. I had the opportunity to go to the property. I have a little bit of concern for the bend in the road, and the seven new either driveways or reds are going to be put in there, I think in the bend. I think it might be a traffic hazard there. But my main concern was the cemetery that is on the property. It's one of the oldest Harris County residents that is buried there. It's a family cemetery, and I had the opportunity to watch the cemetery. And I did get to see the plans that were previously presented. And from the plans, it looks like there will be a new road cut immediately in front of where the cemetery sits. And inside the cemetery, there's a little brick, stone wall, and people are buried inside. And there are a few plots that are half headstones or outside of that lot. But there are also several spots that are much further outside those walls that have unmarked graves. And I don't have the dimensions or the actual where the road is going to run, but from the look of it, there is a possibility that this road will run right through these unmarked graves. I would hope that Harris County would do something to preserve the cemetery. It's a cemetery, but it also has history to Harris County. About how Harris County, he was a Muskogee County resident, and then Harris County became Harris County, took in that area, so they became the first residents of Harris County. And I can't help but think that Muskogee County is coming knocking in on our area of southern Harris County and trying to claim that land back, because as they push further north, pushing into Harris County. I always have the same concerns of traffic, especially traffic on Kenan Road, that's going to be right there across the street, and that people are going to not go down Mountain Hill Road if they can avoid it, because of the traffic there in the mornings with the school and the school buses, and trying to get out to, because the teens are already atrocious. And so people are going to go down Kenan Road instead, so you're going to funnel all these houses and all this traffic down a quiet country road. I always have concerns about the school districts and the amount of students we can have. I know the schools, so that we cannot have concern right now, and we don't qualify for capital highlights, but I still think that we are increasing our classroom size, our student-to-teacher ratios are a concern. I have friends that are teachers, and they say that this is definitely happening. Their group size, their classroom sizes are decreasing. And I always have concerns about strains that we put on sheriff's department, fire, EMS, strains of water. And I really, really, really hope that you look at this development and don't look at it individually and start thinking about how it works with other developments that are already approved in the area. And some that are finally broken ground that are going to be quite large and will spread down Mountain Hill Road eventually that are already approved. So I hope you think about that in the future. Thank you.
Sorry, anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Thomas McNerney, and I live in Poplar Place, 384 Elmwood Drive. And I just have a couple of comments. You know, I think we need to consider what the whole point of living in Harris County is, and consider what the benefit or lack of benefit to Harris County of these developments are. And I'm not talking about any particular development, but that falls in line with this development. We have no impact fee for developers, except that the residents of Harris County are paying the impact fee for the developers to do their development. It is a tax on every one of us in Harris County to allow those developers to develop, because all of the items that Harris County provides to developments are paid for by taxpayers. The county needs more businesses for the tax base. The county does not need more development of housing areas. Ms. Andrews, you know very well from your time as superintendent of schools that the, you know, every family moving into Harris County does not support the school system, you know, with the number of children. That's, you know, that's, that's a fact that you brought up many years ago. The, you know, and that, and that expands to, to emergency systems, et cetera. And we're talking about these developments going in and clearcut the land. I live in Poplar Place. I see the effects of that clearcutting. There's a nice, there used to be a very lovely stream coming into Poplar Place. It is now chocolate block full of the, you know, what they've dug up in that Mulberry Grove development now. So it's basically destroyed that stream. Not to mention the fact that all of a sudden, I, I had a significant hearing of one eighty-five that I didn't used to have before, because they clearcut the land, and those trees are gone, and they won't be replaced. The county needs to put a moratorium on more development until we have more businesses that provide more tax revenue. Dollar generals will not provide the tax revenue that we need. And every, you know, the citizens, as I said, the citizens of Harris County are literally paying for the development impact. I looked at my, I have not made any, any improvements to my house in the past few years. In the past five years, my taxes to Harris County went up twenty percent. In five years, they increased twenty percent. Last year, in one year, they increased ten percent. And that's directly due to the development and the expansion of these developments in Harris County. I think that impacts every citizen of Harris County in a similar manner. Taxes are going up because things have to be supported for all of these new developments, whether it be emergency systems, schooling, water, anything like that. So, once again, I suggest that at the very least, there be an impact fee, and better yet, a moratorium until we have more businesses that provide more tax revenue. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Nicole Bessinger. I live on Moats Way in Moats, Georgia, which as you know is roughly a mile from, excuse me, from our development.
What was that, the number of roads?
Moats Way. Less than a mile from our list development, it's plain to go in. Houston Homes has eighty houses on 315 going in, or I don't know where they're at in the stage of that. The Grove is going in, which is twenty-two hundred units. Then off of Hart Road, there's another eighty houses going in. My question is, is how does the school support all that? Mountain Hill would get those twenty-two hundred units, plus these planned, I guess at this point, he's looking at seventy-seven units. The traffic on Lot Hill Road has already become a problem. I've spoken to many people who live off of Kenan Road, and the traffic that's being driven down there from Mountain Hill Road just because of the congestion at Mountain Hill and 315 is a problem. I don't think anybody has an issue with growth, and obviously, at some point, growth has to happen in every community. I think there has to be a slowdown limit until we see the impact of these other twenty to twenty-four hundred houses, and what that's going to do to our community, before we rush in and throw another hundred houses in everybody's backyard. Because no one knows that impact. We can have thoughts and ideas, but until the traffic's there, until the kids are at the schools, we, we don't know any of the impact. And I just, I, I'm not against any kind of growth. I'm just against doing all of it at one time. I think it needs to be piecemeal, see what the impact is, and see if those areas can sustain and be able to grow that. That's all I got. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Carolyn Smith, and I live at eighty-five thirty-nine Lower Blue Springs, Redwood. Some of what I'm going to say might be a repeat of what the previous speakers had. I'm going to go off my wits, I don't go over time. But I am concerned about the impact that this proposed development on Mountain Hill Road will have on the community. Around the corner, at Oak Hill, along 315, I kind of drove through, there's fifty-eight houses there with a lot of empty lots, a lot of construction still happening. I don't know what the total figure will be. Also, the Mulberry Grove development, according to a two thousand and seven article written about it, this development's going to eventually have twenty-two hundred residential units in it. Less than two miles from these communities that are already underway. There's also another one on Hoodie Hudson Road that accounted over forty houses that are completed with that many lots that are already under contract, so those are houses that are going to be built. Every five years, Harris County provides a comprehensive plan for the community. In the two thousand and fourteen plan, it said, "The top overall priority is to keep Harris County like it is, to maintain the quality of life and aesthetics desired by residents of Harris County." And then in the two thousand and nineteen plan, it said, "Preserving desireful characteristics is a priority of Harris County." And it further said, "And the public planning process reaffirmed much of what the county has had in the previous plans, efforts to keep Harris County the livable community that it is today." So in short, these current developments that are already underway, they will have an impact on our schools, sheriff's departments, fire, and EMS. In the two thousand and nine comprehensive plan, according to that year's plan, Harris County had eight schools, the county had four EMS stations, twelve volunteer fire departments, and the sheriff's department had sixty-seven employees. Currently, we have the same number of schools, the same number of EMS stations, ten, two less volunteer fire departments, and only fifty-two employees, fifteen less than the sheriff's department. My intent is not to disparage Houston Homes or anyone else from conducting their business, but to request that the commissioners please seriously consider the community's concerns for yet another development in such a concentrated area. In addition, if we pay money and spend the time and resources to have a comprehensive plan, why wouldn't we follow? Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak at the same? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is John McMillan. I also live on Moats Way in Fortson. A lot of people brought up some great points. First of all, the most significant for me is the lifestyle of Harris County. It's been very well discussed. You all live here, and you understand it very, very clearly. That particular piece of land, butts mine, I own roughly a hundred and seventy acres across Mulberry Creek. The Mulberry cuts through bedrock. It's cut down to bedrock. Anyone's walked it, has seen it. That piece of land, according to my geological study through the U.S. Geological Study, only has about fifty to seventy feet of topsoil, clay mostly, above that bedrock. My land is peppered with rock-out properties. Every bit of detritus, waste water, fertilizer runoff, pesticide runoff, and everything that comes through septic tanks for those not seventy to ninety homes is going to percolate down, hit that bedrock, and go straight into Mulberry Creek. One of the most pristine waterways we have. So, that's my point. Lifestyle is first. I would say, if this project is anywhere approved, I would call for a full and hard enough study done on that area. Thank you.
My name is Melanie Beck. I live at four six two West Pine Drive. I recently moved to Harris County in January of twenty twenty-one. Like I said, from County, and immediately, I noticed when I would take my son to school, it was a nice, pleasant drive, very different from the way it was in Columbus. I was not tense. I enjoyed the drive. And so I drive down Kenan, I turn left onto Mountain Hill Road, drop him off. I come back up Mountain Hill, go to Kenan. That is a very bad spot as it stands now, getting from Kenan onto 315 and vice versa. The sun comes in at certain times of the year, and it's just a very, it's a very pleasant drive. And I foresee in this area that that pleasant, that is going to be lost. My son is in school, like I said, and I think that we're just growing a little too fast. And I just ask the commission, as the residents come together and kind of slow this down a little bit. And to that, where do we stop? I mean, when are these subdivisions and this raising of all this land out here, when is it going to stop? What's the endgame? You know, do we have a cap on this? Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
Is there anyone else?
Gary Vanister, 1082 Kennon Road. A lot has been said tonight about, you know, Harris County and why people have moved out here to Harris County, and I do think we are getting away from that rural lifestyle with all of the developments that are being brought in. I'm a lifelong, pretty much lifelong resident of Harris County, grew up in Ellis County, and to me, a neighborhood was dear one. I remember when Willow Beach was put in, like, it was maybe a neighborhood every five, 10 years, seems like we get one every six months to a year, new subdivisions. It is, the impact that it is making, I live on Kennon Road, and a lot of people talk about the traffic that's being forced down Kennon, and it is, because people can't get out at New Mountain Hill and 315. The lady just before me talked about the, how dangerous it is turning off of Kennon onto 315. At that time of the morning, in the fall, the sun is coming straight down 315, and it is right at the tree line level. We've already told one car out on 315, because we can't see one of our stops for the school bus. The school buses now are being forced down Kennon, because we can't get out on New Mountain Hill to get to Creekside. We are seeing the impact as the community, but yet we keep approving and approving development after development after development. And at what point will we sit down and say, after your tenure is long gone, and you've retired and moved on to something else, look back on legacy that you've left the county and ask, did you leave the county in a better position than when you found it? I feel like we will see in five to 10 years, all the impacts from all of these developments, this will not look like Harris County in years to come, because of all of this development. And the decisions that you make today will impact the county. And the one thing that I do recommend, when we do talk about the two acre minimum, it should not include floodplain. What is a homeowner going to be able to build in a floodplain? If they want to put a shed in the back of their house, or another building, house, and it's all in a floodplain? It should not, two acre minimums should not include floodplain, that's common sense, in my opinion. Thank you for your time, and I hope y'all make the right decision as it relates to moving forward with all of these developments.
Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
Kurt Paclof, Fire Chief of North West here, Spelling to Fire Department, I'm here representing our South, our North West, Annie Ock, and all of this town. We just got a couple of concerns with it, obviously, as has been pointed out, traffic flow is going to be an issue for us also. We'd like to see two ways in and out of all these subdivisions. The reason being, if we go in and we have a fire, and we drop one of these 5X lines across the road, all of your residents that are in there, that are downstream of us, they can't get out, they can't get out, they can't go to work, they can't do anything. Fires, we can be able to fire scene anywhere from 30 minutes if everything goes right, it's just basically a false alarm, to anywhere up to eight to 10 hours. So, you know, we don't want, we don't want to have these residents trapped in there where they're going to be trying to get out, they're going to have to fall over our hoses, and they're going to cause damage to our equipment, things like that. The other thing that we'd like to see is, I spoke with Mr. Houston, we've talked about it, and they're aiming for fire hydrants every 500 feet, which allows us to be able to actually catch a fire hydrant, supply the water that we need to be able to fight fires effectively, quickly get it put out. And then the other thing, the other issue that we have is, I'm sure there'll be two story houses in there, so we're going to have to be able to get our ladder truck in there that Annie Ock has. That truck has approximately a 50-foot turn, just going to the right-hand side, so whenever we mix those right-hand turns into that subdivision, we've got to have clear space for that full 50 people. Part of the problems that we've seen before is things like power boxes, the big green power boxes going on the corner of the curves, and then we can't make that turn, so we're going to have to stop, get the crew off, turn the truck out, and make that turn, so if we can keep those 50-foot clearances around those, around those sections, things like that, that'd be a great help to us. That's all concerned we get.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Yes, sir.
George Clark, Highway 103. All the pictures spoken said more than I can possibly say. The only thing I can say is, I want y'all to look, you don't have a big crowd here tonight, but you had the last thing that y'all did up down over there, you know, fill all the tournament high school up. A friend of mine was getting up names on a petition on the internet, I don't sign names on the internet. I got a copy from him on paper, and I just rambled, my neighborhood on 103, Mountain Hill Road, Lower Blue Springs Road, Biden Road, I thought that 56 people, 52 of them was against this, one pair said, "They didn't care as long as people don't bother them." The other one said, "He would not sign it, because they were just told against zoning, period." So, I just wanted you to know that there are 50-something more people that's not here tonight that is against this, thank you.
I have a petition right here. I have a petition right here, I'd like to give y'all, this is over 150 signatures of people that are against it.
My name is Jody Harris, I live right next to Mountain Hill School, I emailed y'all yesterday, hope you got it. The parent pickup line to Mountain Hill School goes past my driveway, almost to my mom's, gets longer and longer every year, come by about 2:15 every afternoon, sit in my driveway, you can look at it. Put all these other homes into, what do you think's going to happen? It's just going to keep getting bigger and bigger and bigger. You're going to need a new school, I've talked to the principal, and that's exactly what he said, you're going to need a new school in that area. This developer's not worried about new schools, he's not worried about communities. They're already getting ready to survey the land across the street from this land, and as soon as y'all go down this road with this rezoning, they're going to be asking for that land across the street on Kennon Road. The buses do go down Kennon Road, because I tried to cut down Kennon Road, because I don't want to turn left on the 315, and I followed the buses down Kennon Road, it's just all, it's all a mess, and it's just going to get worse and worse. I've sat on, I've sat there at the end of Mountain Hill Road and 315, I've watched major accidents, three, four car pileup right there in front of me. Bang, 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 luckily, nobody was killed that time, but eventually, somebody will. And that area's just getting worse and worse, so, thank you very much.
Jody Harris? Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to this?
Me?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Brenda Bradshaw McGroton, and I live at 161 Lake of Branch Road on Lake Harding. I've lived 40 years, right off Green Hill Road on Old Bridge Road.
Is there anyone, what is your name?
Brenda Bradshaw McGroton, M.C.G.R.O.T.H.A.
Thank you.
I had 10 acres in Mulberry Creek, went around, it flooded, dreadfully took fences, and just, people were killed. That bosom boy was killed, he was 21, he was trying to raft through there through that mess, and so that whole area where the sand hits are, which is what he's fine by, flooded just more than I think he realizes that they flooded. My main concern is, is two acre stuff. If an individual has to have two acres to build their house, if someone who doesn't live in Harris County and doesn't care about Harris County, he shouldn't be able to build houses on less. It should be two acres at least, the minimum.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to this? Yes, sir.
My name is Greg Austinson, I live at 604 Pete Smith on Mulberry Creek. To follow up on what this gentleman talked about with creek, it's a corridor for a lot of wildlife. We have seen on our property alone in the last three years since we moved out here, it's a ton, bobcat, beaver, otter, we think there actually may be a panic. So, developing along the creek affects a lot of things, not just us as homeowners. This is, I've lost track, I think you probably been here more than me, but in the last two years since I've been coming to these, since the gray rock development, there's a common theme throughout all of this, slowdown. We don't get a chance to go back once we go too far. I don't begrudge Mr. Houston, I don't begrudge the Saunders for wanting to sell him land, the Turners to squish, the Alexanders flew out. Just because we own less, doesn't mean we should have less rights. Just because I can't go in and buy 800 acres and do what I want with it, shouldn't, it shouldn't be the way it is. I get it, we got to have rules, we got to have zoning, you know, we can't disturb whatever we want on our yard, but what I do on my yard, my 20 acres, affects very few people. What they do affects the whole community. And I abide by the rules, they need to abide by the rules, and I know they're trying to, but we need to look at this. And we all did the stuff with Wood, and we came in, and it was like, what's been going on? And I know what y'all have to do is hard, you got to take account everybody's position. But we have one chance. My wife came down from Coeida County for Nuneal, after 20 years, it doesn't look the same. The traffic up there is insane, and it's here. I can't get out onto Hudson Mill Road anymore, because of all the school buses, going back and forth between the stuff on 315 and the high school. Nobody ever, my wife always says, when, you know, in the yards of college and stuff like that, nobody ever tells me, "I wish I'd ran anymore." We need to slow down. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition to this? This will be your last chance to get any of the lawyers to speak. Tyler with Houston, do you have any thoughts you'd like to make?
Thank y'all, I just have a couple, a couple things I want to address.
Pick up, please.
Yes, sir. Is that better?
Better.
There you go.
You know.
Yes, sir. I just want to address a couple things. I didn't hear everything that was mentioned about the cemetery lot, but we did have a survey go out, he checked it, if we didn't get that right, so we'll have to double, triple check that, we want to make sure we're not imposing our predictions on any of that stuff. As we were kind of listening in the back, talking to the gentleman from the fire department, you know, we engineer our roads so that those roads accept, or will take a fire truck turning around in those roads, especially the cul-de-sacs. He did mention, you know, one, two ways in, two ways out. Problem with that on this piece of property, that will kind of connect to one of the other issues, is the creek and the floodplains and all that stuff. We kept our roads out of the creek, and out of floodplains, no crossings, no mitigation, nothing like that. We put it in the back of all the lots, that way, we're not disturbing it. If a homeowner chooses to go in and clear some of it, that's up to them, but we're not going to do that. So that's, you know, that kind of addressed the fire department issue. Somebody said that we were surveying some stuff on Kennon Road, that's not us, we haven't done anything over there, we don't anticipate doing it over there, and we don't have plans to do that. As it stands, and I told you guys a little bit earlier, everything that we've got in this community is two-plus acres, we follow the rules, we've done what, you know, Harris County has asked us to do, and we've even gone above and done what we think Harris County wants us to do, and we've offered lots that are, again, two acres or 20 acres, and everywhere in between. And I know I asked you guys earlier, if we could have a little bit extra time, you know, impose the minimum, I think the state says it's a half an acre minimum outside of the floodplain for septic tanks and stuff like that, and I understand the neighboring property owners' concerns about that hitting the rock and shooting over his way, but having two acres is tough, I mean, I don't know that you find that anywhere in the county, there's a lot of areas in the county where there are one-acre lots, what happened there, you know, we're not the only area we had a floodplain. With that being said, we just need extra time to figure this out.
Does the board have any questions for?
I don't have any questions for the board, but I do have some questions for the committee of development and director.
Just a minute. Just a minute.
Yeah, go ahead, you can have a word for Tyler.
Yeah, I do think that one's your head. My concerns around this particular development are the environmental factors, and Mulberry Creek is one, as was said tonight, one of the most pristine creeks in the South East, I would go as far as to say. And I'm very much aware of all the rock in that area, having built Mountain Hill School, and the septic system that we had to put in that school because of the land parking over there and all this rock and the ground rock there, so, very much concerned about when the homes go in, they're going to have beautiful, if they go in, they're going to have beautiful lawns, and you know what that is, a lot of roadside, and going right into that creek, all run off of all the concrete and streets, and everything's going there. So the environmental concerns are really, I'm sitting up wrong when I think about them in that area. So, have y'all done anything to look at an environmental study of the proposed property in terms of, and I know the steel fences and all that stuff will go up to try to protect the creek, I don't believe they do, but I know you follow the rules on that, but what about the rock, the runoff into the creek, what have y'all done to look at that in a development this large?
So, at this stage, you know, for this particular piece of property, we've not done any of that, only because we want to get past the rezoning stage, you know, and with that being said, I reckon we don't necessarily have to rezone, we just felt like that was the best thing for the county, and so that's why we're here, for the rezoning, and we can do two-plus acres when agriculturalize. But going back to your question, I apologize, that would be something that would be done a little bit later, I don't think it makes sense for us to spend a lot of money doing that extensive work, we've done some engineering, our engineers certainly worked with a flood scientist, or wetland scientist, we've had a wildland engineer look at this property, as they do most of our properties, those guys do, you know, look at wetland delineation, any type of disturbance will do, they work with our engineers to make sure we don't disturb that, and then our engineer will set up, after we talk to Geotag, have to work with our soil guy, our soil scientists, they'll set up a plan, looks like what you said, probably in this scenario, a little bit more deep, outside of what we would normally do, we're open to, you know, environmental studies that you got, but we'd want us to do outside of what's normal due diligence for us.
Have y'all done any soil parking at this point at all?
We do not have, we do not have any Level 3, we've done any Level 1, Level 1 soils look, look pretty good on this stuff, and that's a little bit less invasive of a study.
But on a property this large, you've taken samples, is what you've done?
We have taken samples, but when we get to a Level 3, we'll have to take a lot more samples, and that's a lot more costly, venture than the Level 1 study.
I promise you that is rock and a lot.
Yeah, and I'm sure we'll have to do it with Geotag.
And I promise you, septic tanks are going to be an issue.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For those of you who don't know, Brian Williams is our Director of Community and Development, and just for my education, and so that I understand, this property is currently some to A1.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, they're asking for an R1.
Yes, ma'am.
Can this property, as it is now, an A1, be developed into something?
To two acres, yes, ma'am.
It can be two acres. It can be two acres as it sits now, and there is no rezoning requirements, they can go in there and do that.
Correct.
Okay. The difference between the two rezonings, R1 and A1, which is the lower restricted? R1?
R1.
A1 is less restricted.
Correct.
A1, if they were to decide that they didn't want to rezone to R1, they can go in there without any other rezoning?
They could go in without rezoning, but they would have to go through preliminary plan and final plan procedure.
They would have to do preliminary, that would be with the planning commission.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And in A1, what can you have? And A1 is for is?
Animals?
Yeah.
Any kind of livestock.
Any kind of livestock.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, so now I understand that A1 is less restricted.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you, Brian.
Hey, Brian, a quick question for you.
Yes, sir.
The state's minimum acre outside of A1 plane will accept?
I believe that is one acre. Only the health department?
Yeah.
Pretty sure. That would be a question or we could get an answer from Sandy pretty quick, but I'm pretty sure it's one.
Okay.
And then I, Dr. Finney is here with the system. Would you like to make any comments at all?
I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I'm not here to throw the, turn it before or against.
Correct.
But what they, what they have stated is correct. With the traffic on that road, we already can't run school buses off to three fifteen, turning left off Mountain Hill Road. And the gentleman that lives next door to New Mountain Hill, those car rider lines do get longer and longer each year. So minus more of a question than commentary, what can be done to mitigate that problem at three fifteen and Mountain Hill Road?
Why don't you ask that?
What can be done there? And then can something be done at Mountain Hill Road and Highway 219?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
You should see the car rider lines at the high school.
There is a splash, a T splash that will be on the ballot in the current referendum on May the twenty-four, I believe?
Yes.
That there will be a T splash referendum. This board has submitted three projects for that T splash. One of those projects is the upgrade and improvement of three fifteen from hard drive to Mount of Waukega Road. And one of the other projects is the roundabout, which has already been approved by GDOT in two nineteen through fifteen. So, and we have done traffic studies, I know of three since I've been fishing at three fifteen and Mountain Hill Road. GDOT has done all of that. I asked that they look at a stoplight, I asked if they look at a roundabout, whatever we could do to relieve any traffic. They came back, and the latest work that's been done by the developers there was their rec, was GDOT's recommendation. And it is GDOT's property, so there's nothing else that we can do there other than to ask them to help us out. Now, several years ago, I asked that they put a turn around Mountain Hill Road, under three fifteen. They did that. They were in agreement to do that. They did that, and they did that very quickly. But anyway, I just, I don't think that many people know that we are looking at three fifteen and Mountain Hill Road. It is not our intersection, but we have been looking at the last, at least three years that I, that we have had conversations with GDOT. But that is a T splash project that will be on the ballot tonight.
Any other questions from the board?
There's still questions.
The issue that I'm looking at here, and several of you guys have brought this up, as we look back, let's go back to 2011, 2012, we had eighty single-family home permits pulled in every year. As you look up ten years, 2020, 2021, we had two hundred and thirty-nine single-family permits pulled. That's threefold what it was ten years ago. Now, where we're sitting at today, 2021, 2022, we're looking at a hundred permits, and we still have several months to go within that year. What I caution with, and what I kind of, we really agree with you guys on, is we look at things in a singular format. We don't look at things really as a culmination of what we've seen across the board, right? So cumulatively, what does this affect? What does the cumulative effect of all developments we've got going over within a one mile radius of each other? The issue that I bring up is it's not just from the school board's perspective or the fire department or the sheriff. The way that we look at it, we're asking it from a singular perspective. What does this one development say? What does this one development do? Can we handle the influx of this one development? To me, it needs to be a broader view, because liability doesn't just go from one development. What does it do for traffic? What does it do for, and what does it do for the sheriff's department? Or even the fire department would be able to get in, because a singular ingress, egress location, if you look at, you know, the one that we're looking at now, you've got fifty-three units that are proposed right here. If something obstructs the entrance to, let's say, four and five, you have fifty-three units that have no access in or out of that development. So that puts fifty-three homes or however many, you know, multiply that by how many, you know, items that are there. There's several things there that we're looking at, you know, whenever you start pushing more and more rooftops cumulatively into it, we are looking at about twenty-five hundred approved units within a one mile radius of this location, but three fifteen, four and, and there it knew about, you know, it's twenty-five hundred. We just sit there, and what we just went over was two hundred and thirty-nine single-family permits pulled in 2020, 2021. My concern is, no, we haven't seen growth in the past. You know, your empirical evidence or your data that you look at, you know, math-based, there's looking at how many total permits have been pulled. What are we seeing year over year? What is our forecast that our growth is going to be for the next year, two years, five years? And we plan accordingly. Inflation's hitting. We're having a lot of unknown factorization into this, that we don't know what the outcomes are going to be. What is, what is, and I include myself in this because I pay taxes just like everybody else does, what is the impact of this to all of our neighbors that are existing? We need to look at that, and that's my own opinion. Our gauge to this doesn't necessarily just mean one individual development, everything cumulative. How can we adjust this? And that's the only question I have for you, Russell. The way that we look at these developments, from a singular aspect, we can absorb that, and I agree. When we look at, you know, any kind of growth is inevitable, it has to come, it's coming, regardless of anybody likes it or not. And it's not, you know, I'm trying to say no development, because I want development, I want a right calculated growth. You know, it's something that absorbs the risk that we know we can tolerate. Looking at this from a singular perspective, as a, you know, approved or disproved or whichever way you want to look at it, looking at it cumulatively, is there anything that we have there that accounts for that, or is it just a singular vision, a big singular view for a, coming in to have a rezoning for a new one?
Well, those are types of policy considerations that you can have as a board, but to answer your question, as far as an individual property owner making an application to rezone, that is singular, but it is your prerogative to consider the big picture, and doing so considering factors across the board, including the county's comprehensive plan. But that is a policy consideration for you, for sure.
Right, so liability from the county itself. Just questioning, where does that liability fall in, similar to what we do? And, you know, a return on investment from a developer in itself, there, I will put something out there and say, okay, I'm gonna start this development, but I'm not going to get, looking for my return on investment until ten years. That's, to me, that's kind of not, that's really not how business works in my, so when we're looking at this, we're looking at growth anywhere from two to five years. We're looking at two to five years of net growth on twenty-five hundred units within this one mile radius of, let's say, three fifteen, four and, you know, Mountain Hill Road. So the schools, you know, Dr. Finney's here, you know, he's either, you know, an agrofirm or, you know, but one development we can, but twenty-five hundred collectively, how does that impact us five years from now? When we know that, you know, for each thousand new residents that would get into this, into the community, that's new sheriff day. That's just one day, that's not the full rotation for that, for that day. So that all comes into account, where, and I know we've got MFPs, MFPs are coming, we have not, you know, implemented, there are even voted two implementers. So we're still kind of, to me, behind the eight ball, trying to catch up, because I feel, yes, we need the rooftops to kind of bring in the issue, and we need to be able to do our parts, like, be able to, you know, help out our neighbors, you know, with, with the transit and the, and the ride pickup. But what I, well, that's struggle with everything, you know, going to med, what do we approve that, one, sets with our comprehensive plan? Two, is something that we can absorb that isn't just going out and writing checks, just because we have checks on the checkbook, to be able to bring in new development? We've got to have a wonderful offset, so everything has to play together to figure out what that equity meeting is and what equilibrium is. And that's what I have an issue with, and that's, you know, that's my, two cents of my thoughts on this. And this is what I struggle with, in trying to figure out where, where that balance is. So cumulatively, you say it is within our prerogative to be able to take that into consideration.
Absolutely, one hundred percent. That's why you're elected, that's why you're out there making those tough decisions.
And just to clarify, if our discretion wasn't needed, then we'd just let Brian stab everything that came through. Yes, that falls the rules, yes, that falls the rules, yes, that falls the rules, and our opinions would be needed. So we're here to look at our comprehensive plan and to look at all this cumulative factor of it. I think that's what our goal is.
Now, I think looking at this, and you talk about the growth, where we're at now, two hundred and thirty, forty, fifty homes a year, but if you look back further and realize, hey, Harris County's done this before. You know, I graduated high school there in two thousand, and back into the early two thousands, we built four hundred some houses a year. And the people empowered him, we kept, they kept up, Harris County kept up. The school system now, I mean, they've got great work. I mean, I think they can work with it and keep up with it. Now, I think one thing we've got to keep in mind, which is a, you know, tough decision for us, if we don't approve this for R1, these people can still develop the A1 property. They can still go in there and put development in. So in my, you know, one thing that I have to consider, do I look after the individuals out here and their property values? So now, if we end up with a development that's A1 on two acre lots, and you've got a bunch of pig farms side by side, because, hey, that's what some people like. Now then, you know, what about all these people then? So I think there's a lot of aspects that we have to look at, and a lot to consider. That just being, you know, always part of it.
Well, that's why we have codes and ordinances and laws and stuff that we have to adhere to, which is why we have an attorney over there to make sure, we try to stick with the ordinances, codes, and laws. And sometimes the ordinances, codes, and laws are against some people, and they are for some people. And as Russell said, that's why we got elected to make that hard decision, so we have to, you just have to take everything into account and hope that when you go to bed at night, that you've done what you thought was right and made the right decision, and try to help out the people, the citizens, and this county as a whole. Because it's not singular, just for development, it's communal as in the entire county, not just down in the north end, not just up over the north end or the south end. We have to look at it for everything, you know, and so you have to take everything into account. And, you know, and the schools, I don't know the exact numbers, but we always talk about the schools growing, but our average growth of the schools is not more than about a hundred and fifty or so new students every year, give or take. Some years we've gone over to learn, some years we've gone sixty. And I don't know the exact numbers, and I'm not gonna throw Dr. Finney under the bus, but I've been there for about thirty-some of those years, and we've grown, but we've kind of grown incrementally. We haven't just all of a sudden, boom. And I think that's allowed the school to kind of catch up and make sure they stay ahead. And right now, the school's putting in some growth, they're doing some things because we're, we're looking ahead and we're right where we need to. We just talked about it with our budget, and our audit, the county is now starting to put some money back into the county, build some things and try to grow. You know, I agree with you, we kind of were behind the eight ball, but we hadn't done some things in the last ten or so years. Well, now we're trying to do that and move forward, you know? And sometimes development comes, and when the development comes, you make it houses. Well, if you look at down there at Gateway, they started that about twenty-two years ago, and there wasn't anything down there but a drugstore and the Wendy's, and now you look at that, and they got the commercial and they got the houses. You know, so we just have to hope and pray, yeah, you're right, what is our legacy going to be? Well, you better hope and pray your legacy is going to be that you did the right thing at the right time when you could, and your conscience can be clear, and that's all you can do. And, you know, you just gotta hope that the good Lord gives you the will to do the right thing. That's it.
I have concern that we are about to approve a new UDC. And I'd like to know, Brian, and I'm not asking to tell you tonight, but if this development were coming to us after our new code were in board, what would the differences be in, and I know they're gonna go back and rework, because now they've got twenty-seven less lots, what would the differences be in the way the development would look under the new code versus this code? And I know over time, so we tried to do what y'all asked us to do, but I look at this particular layout, and I still see long-skinned lots, I still, you know, a lot of things that in our new code we're doing differently. So that's something else. You know, I know that they would be under the old code because they started the process prior to, but I would just wonder what it would look like under the new rules versus this.
Any other comments?
We're gonna close a couple of hearing and take action. Is there a motion?
We need a motion on each application.
So we'll do each application separately.
And is there a motion on the first application, which was sixty-seven point seven acres?
I would like to make a motion that we table this possibly for two months, because there are a lot, there are a lot of questions, I think, that still need to be answered, that are for me. And maybe give some time for them to take another look at. So I would like to make a motion that we table this until, it's two months, March, first meeting in March, until the first meeting. I'll second that.
Under discussion, I'd like to ask Tyler if he thinks two months is long enough. I know you didn't hear me, if, if table this two months, is that long enough for y'all to do what you need to do to relook at configuration of the lots, or would you need another month? Just making sure. Two would be good.
Yes, sir. Two's good. We had the holidays, outside my birthday coming up, ain't no holidays, you got to worry about. Thank you.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second, all those in favor? Motion carries. On the, yes, that was seventeen, the sixty-seven point seven acres. The next parcel, only three hundred and fourteen point five five acres, is that everybody?
I would like to make the same motion to table that for two months until the first meeting in March.
Okay. I'll second that. We've got a motion and a second, all those in favor? Now, in our, what's that?
It's a number, number eight.
Back to league. Yep, back to league.
Can I, can I ask you a question before we get started? Randy, this is one, can we invite the members of the property?
People, if you have the please, turn it down just a little bit, we still have a meeting going on.
Did we invite the members of the advisory committee to this meeting?
No, we didn't, nothing.
Okay, I think that's something that we, that we should have done. I know that Megan's here, but I'm asking if we invited everybody. Yeah, so, the other thing, if you or maybe you, Randy, can explain exactly what we're doing here tonight, the process, what exactly in layman's terms, what would Tonight, the process, what exactly in layman's terms, what we will be funding for, we're coming on tonight.
Is my audio coming through, I'm sorry?
Yes, it is.
Ready to proceed, Mr. Ray, Mr. Carey.
Go ahead, Lee.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again for the opportunity and for allowing me to be remote this evening. I'll go through a series of comments and then pause, and for anyone watching on the screen, there are pages out of the draft capital improvements element document being shown. I'll reference which those are, it's just a very few that were highlighted tonight. So, the purpose of this discussion and public hearing this evening is to provide public notice of the intent to transmit the draft capital improvements element, also known as the CIE, to the River Valley Regional Commission and Georgia Department of Community Affairs for review. This will start a 60-day review timeframe that will have concurrent public review with this document, the draft CIE being posted on the county website during the same timeframe. So, again, purpose is to approve, transmit of the draft document for review. It'll be a 60-plus day review timeframe, and there will be public review at the same time as the state regional review. The CIE document is based on methodology report, impact fee methodology report, which is currently on the county's website, has been posted on the website for several months. As previously discussed, the methodology report was reviewed with the steering committee, the task force, and also with the board of commissioners on multiple occasions. And it is a more detailed, more exhaustive analysis of impact fee possibilities based on parameters that we were given to work with. The CIE document is streamlined comparison, and it's designed to meet the requirements that the state places on effectively policy planning or comprehensive planning. So, in the case of an impact fee program, the CIE is part of the adopted comprehensive plan that provides official policy for use of impact fee funds. And I'll describe that in more detail as we go through, I'll pause for a second in case there's any questions.
Okay, thank you, Lee.
Okay. An impact fee ordinance must ultimately be adopted with a fee schedule before impact fees can be collected. So, I wanted to point out again, the difference between this draft capital improvements element document and the ultimate impact fee ordinance, which is separate document, separate process, yet to be started. This draft capital improvements element features a five-year work program, which starts on page 38. It's a listing of projects proposed to be eligible for impact fee use. It's organized by project type, and as a reminder, the different project types involved are parks and recreation, sheriff's office and jail, EMS, E911, and volunteer fire department or fire department use. You'll note in the five-year work program that there are no fire department projects shown within five years. At this point, it's not been determined that fire department projects are short-term or immediate needs, so they have not been included. That said, this CIE can be updated, should, will be updated, must be updated on an annual basis, so in any year, there's opportunity to add and to modify projects as appropriate to keep it current. The five-year work program must be updated every year, as I just said, and so this will become a living document and a part of the county's comprehensive plan that will be updated every year. Most projects in this, and on the screen if you see it, is page 38 of the document, which is the first page of the five-year community work program proposed. Most projects in this first five-year work program are parks and recreation projects. The table does not prioritize the projects, but it lists, for each project, there's listed a projected timeframe, a projected cost estimate, and the percent of the project that's eligible for impact fee use. In most cases, it's less than 100% of the project that's eligible to be funded with impact fees based on the calculations involved. With an ultimately adopted impact fee program, after adoption of an impact fee ordinance and setting up the schedule, this list, the five-year community work program, would serve as a guide for annual budgeting. It's not a list that must be accomplished with impact fees, but it's a list from which you commissioners will be able to choose each year projects to implement based on the amount of impact fees that come in once a program is up and running. So, the importance of this list is establishing eligibility. It's basically a project eligibility list for impact fee funds, both which projects are eligible to use impact fee funds for, and the percentage of each project that can be funded with impact fees, and those are the details that are in the list. Alex, if you go to the second slide, the projected facilities are the next page, I'm sorry. The projected facilities are grouped per park. For example, the needs for Ellersley Park are listed on the second page and proposed in the, in the year program. Impact fee funds would contribute to pay for facilities, but will rarely cover the cost of an entire project, so it's going to be a, a portion of the effort for each project. The next page, Alex, the proportion of each project that can be attributed to new growth versus existing population needs is what is eligible for impact fee use. Remember again, the purpose of impact fees is to offset the cost of infrastructure that is a burden of the community by requiring new development to pay its fair share. And the whole methodology report and all the calculations involved in the analysis so far have really been about determining what is that fair share, using a reasonable calculation and following state laws and guidelines for that. So, as an example, a potential future ag event center that is, you know, that, that might be developed, that has been identified as a potential project, about one-third of that would be impact fee eligible, two-thirds would not be because it would be attributed to the needs of the existing population, and that's typical for projects listed here.
Lee, I have a question about that specific one, so since you just listed as an example, can I ask that now?
Absolutely.
I see that it's proposed that 36.99% of the total cost of an ag event center could be paid for with impact fees. Is that cost estimate there, the 36.99% of what you have projected is the total cost, or is that a total cost figure there?
The total cost figure is what's shown.
Okay, I think that perhaps we didn't communicate to you exactly the type of event that we've been discussing in the community as a need, because that particular event center that we've been discussing would be in the area of about 2.5 to 3 million.
Okay, all right. And that's exactly the type of detail that can be adjusted as we go through the review process. It would be appropriate to, if that is more aligned with what's envisioned, then adjusting that cost estimate is, is no problem, and I don't believe the rest of the table would need to be adjusted with regards to the proportion of it that can be impact fee funded.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. The next page, Alex, the top of this page shows another example of impact fee eligible investment, which is land purchase for new parks. In the case of land purchase for new parks, our methodology analysis and calculations show that land purchase would be 100% impact fee eligible. New parkland needs projections are based on population growth projections, so it's assumed that the existing amount of parkland provides the baseline level of service, any additional parkland is going to be above that baseline level of service to serve the growing population. This page also starts to show sheriff's office projects. When we get beyond parks and recreation in the list and start talking about sheriff EMS and E911, you'll see both facilities projects and vehicles included on the list. If you'll go to the next page, Alex, the EMS items, for example, include both facility expansions and vehicles. For a vehicle to be eligible for impact fee fund use, the life expectancy of it has to be 10 years or greater. So, your more substantial vehicle investments typically are what are acceptable. For example, new ambulances are shown on this page as being needed in year five as an estimate. And again, I'll remind you again, this will be updated every year in order to remain current and accurate, both with respect to what impact fees have been spent on, check it off the list, and also to any changing needs and projections for outer years. So, there will always be a five-year outlook through the course of the program. And then, next page, E911 is shown here, a few E911 projects. These are almost entirely attributed to new, new growth projections and are almost entirely impact fee. Page of the community work program. And with that, I'll pause to see if there are any other questions before I give a quick overview of the anticipated schedule moving forward.
Lee, this is Commissioner Grant. To go back where you have the recreation, it says Pine Mountain Valley Park, and I know this went to the recreation director and all that, but the improvements that they're here for Pine Mountain Valley Park, if I'm not mistaken, I don't believe the county owns it.
It's leased.
It's, and it's the, the, Pine Mountain Valley Association owns it. So, would we have to talk to them to make sure if we're going to do some kind of improvements there and make sure this happens? And you may not even know the answer to any of it, or should we take that out?
I, I don't know the, the very particulars of that, but in principle, if coordination is established and an agreement is established, then the county could spend funds to improve Pine Mountain Valley Park. I think that would effectively be the same scenario as the county spending funds to contribute to volunteer fire department facilities or vehicle needs down the road when it's determined that those can be added to the program.
All right, good, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, ladies, Bob.
Yes, sir.
All right, so looking at the communication tower for N11, you've got $2.5 million for a single dollar.
That is what is in there, yes, and that's one that we need to take a more careful look at, which is why I should.
Yeah, that's, the last cost of that thing, that's real high, so including power, including your aggregate, so for your transport, by you, like the fiber itself, looking at about a $200,000 per tower, and that's staying under the 200-foot ceiling for FCC lighter towers. So, can we downgrade that to about $200,000?
Potentially, but we'll need to talk to the E911 folks to be sure we understand the full details of that from their perspective.
Yeah. And I know that we're looking at, at least three to four towers instead of a single tower. I don't know if that makes a difference, but I know this one just as a singular communication tower for N11, at 2.5 million, in my opinion, way high.
Right, I understand, and I, I do understand that your typical cell tower is significantly less expensive than that, so we'll, we'll double check that. Okay. As far as next steps are concerned, should you approve to transmit this capital improvements element document as a draft to the state for review, which again, does not mean that changes can't be made, it's simply process required. That would start this week, the timeframe allocated, allocated for regional, state, and public review. Our schedule actually shows a full three months allocated for that. It's been a little bit unpredictable recently, my understanding, the time that the state requires for review and response. It's possible that it would be faster, even significantly faster, but we've allocated a full three months just to be safe. So, that timeframe would start. During that review period, we will meet with the advisory task force again, and also with you to discuss, do some study and discuss impact fee ordinance, details, options, fee schedule options, talk all these things over in the process of analysis and drafting of an impact fee ordinance. And again, the impact fee ordinance is where the actual fee schedule is established, so we haven't yet. If you remember, the methodology report by calculations established what are the maximum allowable fees to be charged. The impact fee ordinance is what determines the actual fee schedule. And then, after working out the, the details on that, there will be multiple public hearings held, probably in the March timeframe, in association with impact fee ordinance drafting, and prior to any vote to adopt the CIE and/or an impact fee ordinance. Well, that would be happy to answer any additional questions you might have, and then, it's my understanding that we must formally open the public hearing, hearing, public comments, and close the public hearing prior to a vote regarding transmittal.
Any other comments?
Lee, can I ask the commissioners a question? I have, and I'll be honest, I haven't had a great deal of time to go through this. Have y'all, did y'all feel, have y'all been able to go through all this with these projects and whatnot?
Not by none, but by light of.
I read through, I read through the entire report, some of the projects that are in there, you know, I'm like, well, I don't know about all that, but I assume they're talking to staff about those particular projects, and, and this is a plan, it's not an absolute, and so I don't know if we left some projects out, or if we need to take some out that are in it, but I don't know how we get to that different thing. One item in particular that I was looking at is like a splash pad at Ellersley Park. I just, I don't know a thing about splash pads, but I know just about every splash pad I've visited with my grandchildren is down more than it's up. I would imagine that that is a maintenance nightmare.
And it is.
Yeah, it's a bug present.
And it's costly.
And I'm like, do we really want a splash pad at a passive park? So, you know, things like that, I look through and I see that. But I just have one or two little questions like that.
I was just curious.
I would assume that this is a wish list of the, of the department head to put this in.
And we'll determine it every year on the budget.
I would think.
Whether we, you did that project or not. I just worry that we've left projects out that we really would want to use impact fees for, and we just may not even know it, but we. for, and we just may not even know it, but we can update it every year. So I think that's what brings me comfort is that we can, it has to be updated.
One thing I have to notice on here, especially with the parks in Ray, I don't notice anything in correlation towards restrooms. I know with V and T, I don't see anything for restrooms.
There is in the Ellersley Park. If you look in there, it says restrooms.
I think there's two restrooms.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Like in Mulcahy right now, you already have two restrooms.
Would love for renovation of her.
Well, I'm not saying, but they probably renovate them, I mean, they're about as old as I am.
Well, could you use this one for renovation?
With, um.
They practically just can't really use it.
Let me say expansion.
Expansion could be used for expansion, not renovation.
Okay, I was just curious.
Let me ask this question, Randy or Russell or Lee, one of y'all, to, to vote on this, we're not voting that we're going to do the impact fees, we're just voting, we're sending this to CIA for them to look at it, to see if what's been done is acceptable, and then it comes back for us to vote yes or no, and then we can tweak it if we need to then adjust it and all of that.
We would vote on this again or fight on the ordinance?
No.
Lee, Lee, can you answer this question?
Yes, I can. To answer Commissioner Lance's question, you would vote on both ultimately, to adopt and the ordinance to adopt.
Okay.
And for clarification, the CIE becomes a part of the comprehensive plan.
Correct.
But in the same way that you voted ultimately to adopt the comprehensive plan update as a policy document, the official policy document, you would vote to adopt the CIE as a, as an amendment to that policy, and then you would separately vote to approve the ultimate impact fee ordinance after it is drafted and developed, and that would follow the typical ordinance adoption process of first executive meeting, public hearings, and so forth.
Thank you.
Ken.
Any other questions from the board? So because this is a, a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing if there's anybody in the audience who'd like to make any suggestions about it.
Megan Nutter, and I am on committee for this, and I hope that you approve it, and that the county is in need for impact fees as we sit here and talk about how we have grown, but we have not grown in EMS stations or fire stations, and we're decreasing in share. These are, this is money, just based on growth that will help fund building these extra places for us, I think, and they're very important, so I would vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else at the bottom of the speaker's list? None, public hearing, like action. Was there a motion?
I'll make the motion that we accept this draft and that it be transmitted to Department of Public Affairs for review.
And I will second that.
And you approve the resolution?
Approve the resolution.
And I'll second that motion.
All right. You got a motion in a sec, all those in paper? Motion carries. The next item on our agenda this evening is our financial statement from October of This statement was provided for us to review back on December 7th, 2021. And Mr. Chastain is still with us this evening. Are there any questions for Mr. Chastain, or he has any information to share with us?
Still looks good. Have you been waiting? I figured I'd just ask you a question.
And you're getting the November, December reports together, that's very odd. In fact, that's a little bit of a, you're getting, you're getting a catch thing.
Not so bad. Yeah, not as easily. I made the motion that we accept the financial statement of October 2021.
You got a motion in a second, all those in paper? Motion carries.
Could I add one thing under my business? Randy, I was looking at our ordinances the other night, I happen to be bored, so I looked at our ordinances, but actually I was looking for something. And I came across in our ordinance that we have some of our appointed boards that should provide us with annual financial statements. I leave one per year, and I have one board, I'm not going to name that, but I will get with you on that. The other thing is that same board, I can't find any minutes for 2021, but I will get with you on that, that board after this meeting.
Okay.
All right. The next item on our agenda this evening is a proposal for architectural services to design a new EMS volunteer fire station facility during the October 2021. Board retrieved construction of a new EMS volunteer fire station facility within the Northwest Harris Business Park was discussed, and consensus was to proceed with a building design. A RFQ was prepared and distributed during late October to obtain the services of an architect to design the building, prepare construction documents, assist with bidding, and provide construction administration services. On the deadline date of November 19th, the county received four responses from Barnes Gibson Partners, Heck, Burt Shaw Architects, IPG, and 2WR Architects. Now, at the evaluation committee, consisting of the county manager, the EMS director, the current and former Northwest Harris Volunteer Fire Department chiefs reviewed the four responses, met on December 10th to personally discuss the responses, and selected 2WR to design the new facility. 2WR has prepared a proposal to provide architectural services for the project for a total cost of $190,000. Since this project was not included in the current approved budget, a budget amendment of this amount is needed. If 2WR's proposal is approved, the design of this project is estimated to take about three months, January through March. Once the project is designed, it will be competitively bid out throughout April and awarded sometime in May to the most reasonable bidder. Construction is estimated to take about nine months, June through February of 2023. The construction cost of this project will be placed in next year's proposal. Randy, is there any other information you'd like to share with us about this project?
That sums it up pretty much. On the back of your agenda is the proposal page within the Business Park, and EMS director along with the current fire chief and broker service is here to answer any questions as part of the evaluation committee, if the board wants to hear from you.
I'd like to ask a question to either one of you, or Bucky, you were on the committee to do this, yeah, I'm assuming you and Kirk and the other committee members really went over this with the fine due color, make sure it fits what the EMS needs as well as what it might fit for Northwest Harris.
Yes, well, the RFQ proposal was four, like Andrew said. I went to the county manager, I got them, I delivered them to Byron, who's their chair for Northwest, to Kirk. We put a committee together in-house with my committee, contained the assistant chief, who's a battalion chief in Columbus, and he has some experience with it, and the deputy chief, Ella Green, she's one of my supervisors, who just designed their two new stations. We didn't have any preconceived notion, we don't know any of these people, there was no plans, this was nothing more than a resume, a vanilla resume. One of them had no experience with fire stations, one of them only built very expensive federal fire stations. But two of y'all built true county administration building, we reached out to them, they were happy, their fire administration building, two of them, what they did build, they designed. It's a different builder. They designed West Point Fire Department, we reached out to their clerk and their retired fire chief, Mitt Smith, very happy with, they designed our wreck and our library, and they designed multiple brand new stations in the city of Columbus, we reached out to Columbus's administration. I didn't sit on the committee because I didn't want to sway, it was Kirk, Byron, my assistant chief, and one of my supervisors already knew who I wanted, I didn't tell them, and when they came back, it was unanimous, two of them, that's who I thought we should go with, too. We can put our hands on it, we can see it, we didn't have any negatives, we reached out and talked with them. It looks like they do what we want to do, and like I said, it's a resume, there are no plans. So, you know, from the four proposals, it looked like they do what we need to do, it's satisfied Northwest and certain satisfied me.
Did that, did the other proposals was there, did they have their expense, the cost?
Some of them had a rough out, but, you know, we haven't seen the design, so I don't think, you know.
Why, and their cost?
Right, 2WR has their cost.
I know 2WR does, but the others.
This is coming since in the qualifications.
It's not in qualifications, it's not in.
Can I, would it be possible to see that?
Oh, yes, ma'am.
To see what?
To see the others.
Other what?
Proposals.
Qualifications.
The qualifications, yeah.
Yeah, it's usually a percentage of the total building, isn't it? Architect's cost.
Well, but now, we did, we did a qualification-based selection process, so we picked somebody based purely on the qualifications, can they do what we want to do? And then price is secondary, so we chose the best person based on qualifications, and then we went to them and got a price. So that's this. But, yeah, we got, we got extra copies of all four of them.
Yeah, I'm right to say.
Sure.
But to answer your question, all parties involved were happy with, I mean, it's a vanilla resume, basically.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
To Randy, prior to approval of this, well, this board approved the design, is what I'm asking. I mean, I know that we, they're going to determine the elements within the building, but I'm talking about the aesthetics of the actual building.
But, you know, the Business Park had restrictive requirements on what it can look like, but sure, if the board wants to get involved in looking at the aesthetics, no problem, because the board's going to have to pay for this, so.
That's right.
Y'all must feel fine about it, because you're going to be looking at it for a while.
I would like to approve the.
The facade. Okay, no problem, just like you did for the solar waste building and the utility administration building.
I don't want to tell them what they need in it, that's.
Sure. I'm going to assume, though, that 2WR is going to have all the restrictions and the codes that go into Business Park.
They already have it.
All right.
That was part of the RFQ process to know what they're getting into.
And the problem that I had with 2WR prior, in previous projects, is they did not bring us professional rendering for us to look at, so I would like to request professional rendering when they give you a design. Yes.
And that, that didn't look like three bay and everything else.
Well, we haven't gotten, yeah, it was, I mean, we hadn't hammered out the specific, or I think it's just a little bit.
I'd like to make the motion that we approve 2WR proposal, see with the project while adding in, as soon as the stipulations of the professional drawings and the renderings, and that we have a say of what it actually looks like, based on the requirements and all that is in the park. However you want to word it, Nancy.
And the budget amendment.
And the budget amendment. Yeah, I was going to say, don't make me need it worded, please.
Okay, then, Eric.
I'll second that motion. Are there any other discussions from the board? All those in paper? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Up next are project updates, Mr. Mallon.
Mr. Chairman of Work Commissioners, number four, update the unified domain code. The next meeting is January the 10th at 5:00 in the library to go over the, maybe the final elements of UDC, hammer that thing to be finished. Number six, what we just talked about, the new EMS volunteer fire park facility at the Northwest Harris Business Park, so that project is beginning, and the board should probably have a rendering maybe in late February, early March to review.
Randy, before we go further, on January 10th, which would be this Monday.
That's coming Monday.
All right, and we're at five?
Yes.
We better be done soon, because I got something special I need to watch tonight.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I'm not going to tell you where my leeks are, but, you know, I like dogs.
It's not till 8:30, right?
I know.
Yeah, but I'm afraid we're not.
But then, Adwood will be motivated to hurry and talk and finish it up.
Maybe we don't get out there late.
It's going to be, y'all going to be there by yourself.
Just like last time, it's a workshop, just like last time.
We can determine ours and Andy's.
Yeah, she can. Five oh one.
We'll start at 5:00, can we finish? If y'all want to finish.
All right.
At the library, just like last time.
All right, so I'm good.
Number nine, plastic first of roof, again, waiting for materials to come in, because there's a supply chain shortage. Number 12, the elevator, that's on bid, to resurface those three roads, bid opening is January the 18th, board consideration February the 1st, completion by this June. That's the annual elevator. Number 13, patch various county roads, the public works director has prepared a list, and it will be out for bid probably this week or next.
Next.
To re, next week, to patch various county roads. Number 17, that has been completed as of today, the county received a new skid steer. It was promised back in September, then October, November, December, and now it finally came today.
With all the attachments?
With the attachments repurchased, and that public works department did get a training on the skid steer, and they're itching to use that, that new piece of equipment. Number 19, we're developing hours apart, the soft opening is January 27th, and the splash pad apparently will not be part of it.
What time?
Number.
What time?
What?
What time?
I'll be turning at this point, is that a Saturday? I would say Saturday mid-morning.
Unless it's 10:00 degrees.
Yeah.
You're having a big Saturday at 4:00.
Or Saturday at maybe 3:00 or maybe 4:00.
Probably 1:00.
Yeah, no matter, maybe we've been practicing soccer at 6:00 every morning, so whatever, whatever time you want to do.
Okay. Number 24, the Phase 5 of the Maryland Trail, that's been designed, it's been surveyed, it's halfway through design, it should go out in bid probably in late March, to be finished by late this year. And that's all the way from the Calum County Store to the Carver School.
The old Carver.
The old Carver School.
The actual, the actual second old Carver School.
Yeah, that one.
I have to put it.
The original Carver.
I have to put that way 27.
I have, so the original Carver School in PLC.
Slowly past that post office.
There you go.
Number 41, it's not a bid, it's a shirt of waterworks administrative office that is ongoing, the project is being designed, we have a very, to get that project bid out.
I'll close the way on that.
That project should be bid out next month, early next month, and be completed in the Number 43, Green Drive, that's on bid, the bid opening is January 14th, with board consideration on February the 1st, and completion by the end of fiscal year June 3rd, and that's using federal MP funds. Number 44, courthouse renovations, that project will be bid out probably late February.
What, Randy, this has been over the years, if we had the huge campaign about the courthouse was falling in, what renovations or what repairs have been done in the year?
Just the normal, basic.
Like just your normal every day?
Every day, once a week.
The door sticks and you know when it's, the door burns.
Toilets running, small leak.
Big leaks.
Small leaks. Well, we got a bunch of big leaks, but we're fixing them as we have time, or as we, they're big leaks.
Do we know how that's.
I know it's short.
It's being designed right now. It's all being designed. It didn't help that the architects got COVID for about, but.
Have we mitigated anything from the leaks that are already unfolding?
Yes, I tried to, but again, the roof is probably 10 years past its useful life, it is just, it just, the leaks just cannot be fixed.
All the, the roof is really terrible, too.
But, but the repairs in this bid package will be a complete new roof for the old and new sections, a new HVAC system, windows, replacement windows, and fixing the ducting and repainting here and there.
And the windows will reflect the street nature?
Yes, everything will reflect the street nature. It's on the National Raster for the street places, isn't it? And therefore we have to follow street guidelines.
Of the HVAC system, is it going to take a lot longer to fix it with, basically with the courthouse being used every day? Would it be easier, not that I know where we could put everybody, but if we didn't Would it be easier, well, I'm not that I know where we could put everybody, but if we didn't have anybody in here?
That having an empty building would be far superior of a construction process and project. But that's not feasible here. Without major expense, without major interruptions. Again, when you have an operating courthouse, when the roof is being worked on, it's gonna make noise. When the court will be in session, people are gonna be unhappy. That's just why it is. But the Superior Court judge believes that don't do it, we don't do it. So the HVAC system, it's, it's in bits and pieces in all the offices. So instead of ripping out the whole system and putting a whole brand new system with, you know, interconnections of ductwork. We have to go department by department. And that's not the best approach. And the architects, and that's not, that's a last year approach. We have no choice. It's an historic building and we're doing it in pieces and by floors. That's just the way it is. Um, it's where we get done. It's where it take longer and be less effective and cost more. Of course, we have to go floor by floor, piece by piece, room by room. Um, and make minimal noise and minimal disruptions. Should be difficult. I've done two crash, uh, renovations. They were awful projects. They can in a weekends, but when that's a weekends, that's extra costs. It's a pretty much cost.
Yeah, and some departments don't.
And some departments where they put their security and they're really anybody in their office after hours. It's a whole gamut of issues and problems. But courts renovations, everyone knows it's really, really, really needed. It's gonna be a bear project. It's not gonna be fun. Like the utility offices, the solar waste office, the EMS, those are gonna be fun projects. This one, it's not gonna be fun. And people will be unhappy. And we will be keep, we will receive complaints mainly from the internal employees.
Sure, I mean, I get a complaint about once a week about how bad the front of the courthouse looks and how it should look like the crown jewel of the county. And then I was actually told by, uh, our, um, tax commissioner that she's somewhat embarrassed about trying to have a tax sale out there. Cause she's working about the balcony. I'm like, well, we're doing the best we can do because of the fact that we let it sit for too long. And now we're stuck playing catch-up. You know, I mean, that's, that's where we are.
But the architects are working on it. They're designing it right now. It is complicated working in existing building. It's structural preservation issues are part of their equation. And, um, and this is gonna be a complicated project. It's gonna require the roof workers, painters, window installers, structural people from the balcony. So we're, the architect and I are talking about how are we gonna deliver this project? Well, we just thought out for bid and a roof will get it and hoping he has structural experience. Or more structural engineer get it. And we hoping he has roof experience. So we're thinking about, we're contemplating on providing this project with a delivery method of CM at risk. We're still debating on, on what, what avenue we need to go down. You know, pre-qualified, for example, pre-qualified, um, general contractors. And have only general contractors bid on this project through a qualification based selection process. Yes, so, so they're recommending that, um, to do a CM at risk, construction manager at risk. It's a unique but effective construction delivery process where you pre-qualify a general contractor based on their qualifications. And that company and that company alone works with the architect to develop a guaranteed maximum price. Not exceed max based on 95% of the construction drawings completed. Then they would give the county a price that, that, in a timeframe that cannot be exceeded. And I think that's the safest way to go. So I think we're gonna go down that process.
How do you see it at risk for all the schools in the Paris County except for, no other? And it's very good process.
It's a very effective process. It's used, it's well-used. We haven't used it on any of the projects. Some of the other projects in the county have been pre-planned. Uh, this project is probably gonna require a little more sophistication. And I don't want to be on bid day, when we open the bids, we get a, a roofy contractor that has set out structural engineers, um, uh, HVAC folks. That, that can be a disaster.
You also get a low bid.
And when you get a low bid on this kind of sophisticated, complicated project.
It's not just gonna be a sophisticated project. It's gonna be a tender loving care kind of project. Cause we've gotta put that back into this building.
Yep. And this is only phase one. There's phase, there's more, phase is coming. So I, I think we're going down that CM at risk, uh, process. I think it's a better fit for this particular project.
But I don't want to end up like Columbus and their government buildings, where, what the issues that they're having.
But, but that's exactly where.
We're about there.
We're making facts.
That's right.
But we're gonna, um, head off on the pass. But we'll do that. Number 47, uh, the board heard tonight in the HCP study. That is going down the road to completion. Um, if everything goes well, it can be completed in April. Um, again, that's a legitimate document. I don't want the board to approve something that they're not extremely happy with. Um, we can take projects out, include projects, put new projects in, not a problem. Number 52, the teach policy election is coming up in May of 2022. You can see the four projects the county has on it. Number 53, rich district of five county commission districts based on the 2020 US census. The county did receive a draft map from the state reaportment office. So the county, we, we will have a special court meeting on tomorrow. January 5th at 3:30 in this room. To four, to have a meeting among ourselves, among yourselves, to go over the proposed map. And then at four o'clock, have a zoom top meeting with the state reaportment office to make sure, draw up the map that dawn was. We can tweak it. And at the end of one hour session, hopefully the map, there's a map that can be agreed upon. And then a resolution side, sending it to the state or state legislative delegation for them to introduce it to local legislation. In the general assembly that I believe get, begins July 10th or the 11th. Uh, the secretary of state's office has sent us a letter saying they want to have all the counties in Georgia have their maps ready by January 10th. The beginning of the session, so it can be, all can be approved. So that meeting will be tomorrow at 3:30 to five in this room. It's a public meeting. It has been advertised. It will be, um, televised live like we do now and on YouTube for archival. So that should be a very exciting meeting. You can see on, um, on page six, I added a new page. And this is the AARP projects. So here's the AARP projects the board approved, a little bit of update on where they stand, green means completed. Um, and you can see the status of all these projects. Uh, two of them were waiting for the grants to be awarded. Hopefully they'll be awarded sometime later this month. The elevated water tank at, um, 315 and diverse power EMC's, um, broadband. And the green drives on bid for that water line extension. So the AARP funds or, or, uh, projects are moving along. This BLOSS, Clint Chastain, their CFO, alluded to this earlier during the audit. Look at November's BLOSS collections. Three hundred, almost 370,000 that month. Much larger than the previous month and the previous year. Much, much larger. And we're already almost at 50% collections. In only the fifth month, add a 12 months of this month. The same thing with lost, higher than last month and higher than last year in a significant amount. And the single family homes in December was 14. So it's about, um, 105 so far this fiscal year. And that's roughly, that's basically halfway through. So. You can see the solar waste tonnage. And that's the end of the report. Do you have any answering questions? The board can answer.
Do we know how many counties have done the building permits out in Harris Creek, which is actually in the city of West Point, but in Harris County? I know they don't tell us, but.
That's in West Point and they keep those records, but I know in excess of about 40 to 45, last time I checked. And they're still building. So by then I'll be in the 50s.
Which creek is that?
The Harris Creek subdivision, not Harris, Harris Creek. Creek.
Creek.
Creek.
Any other questions from the board?
None.
Mr. Britt, that's the next item is for you, a resolution to add Harris County to the lower Chattanooga transportation authority to the 5311 rule of public transportation program.
Thank you, chairman, members of the board. Uh, as you may recall, the board discussed, uh, this item and approved by resolution to join the authority back in August of 2021. I've worked with the attorney for the regional authority for adding the county through to the enabling legislation, which requires local legislation through the general assembly. And we put together the resolution, which y'all are considering tonight, that simply joins Harris County to that authority so that it can participate in that program. And of course, a motion and approval of the resolution is required. And what this does is the, uh, representative Gerald Green, who is the sponsoring legislator for the enabling legislation, did request that all be joining counties, uh, approve a resolution. So he has that covered, showing that y'all did in fact want this to happen.
And I, um, if our local delegation, is they aware that we're sending this to?
Uh, I haven't, I haven't discussed it directly with him, uh, but again, Gerald Green, who I know is a part of y'all's, uh, local delegation, is the primary sponsor of the bill and we've been working with him and we'll certainly give a representative's.
As soon as he, that we should do that.
Yes, sir.
Very soon.
Absolutely. That, and then again, that's the purpose of this resolution is to send to our local delegation requesting that they do this quick. Yes, absolutely. We'll keep up with them and explain the process.
And when we had our meeting, when we had our meeting, it would have been, um, earlier this year. It would have been nice to know, you know, since that time to say, this is coming. Again, they, they, I think that, um, sort of, I mean, it comes very much, otherwise I mean, it's a local legislation.
That, that is duly, that is duly noted. I will, um, make sure that this happened, but I, guys are geared up.
Is there a motion?
Make the motion that, uh, we approve the resolution to add Harris County to the lower Chattanooga transportation authority for the 55311 rule public transportation program.
And a little sec.
We'll get a motion in a second. Um, all those in favor? Motion carries.
Mr. Britt, would be back to you for the last item of the season.
Yeah, well, there are a few people here that have waited patiently to, to get to this item. So thank y'all for your patience. Y'all, y'all didn't know what y'all were getting into tonight. Uh, that I apologize. Uh, but this, this goes back to, uh, a discussion the board may recall previously where, um, the school district was looking to use the PIA as a conduit for, uh, public financing to, um, or a capital improvement project. Uh, they have since scrapped that, uh, approach. Instead is, uh, attempting to use general obligation debt. That was already approved by the voters during the 2019 East WOST referendum. But as y'all know, um, this, uh, borrowing, uh, like the military process, still requires the board commissioners, which is the only entity in the county that can actually levy a tax. Approve the levy of the tax that the school district has requested, authorized to request. And that school district, the school district has done that. And so before the board tonight is the resolution that basically is just a, uh, formal approval of the levy. Y'all may recall that part of the, uh, general obligation debt that was approved was already, uh, the levy was already approved by the board commissioners. They're using the remaining portion of that approved amount of general obligation debt for this new capital improvement project. And so they're simply asking for the board to levy that remaining amount. Uh, the way it works is you, you have to, uh, secure and have the ability to back the, uh, project with the general obligation debt, but to the extent that East WOST funds, uh, come in that can cover it, that is used to then reduce that, um, uh, tax to property owners. Uh, but with that, they may have some more information for you, specifically I do, um, Dr. Finney is here to answer any questions with regards to what the school district is doing with the money. But I think he'll, he'll say and talk about the group that was discussed in the public hearing previously tonight. This is part of, um, helping to, uh, mitigate that group. So with that, I don't know if the board has any questions for me.
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure that you make it clear that there's no law to, to the county.
That, that is correct.
I want to make sure that that's out there and people understand that.
That is correct. Your conduit, just like the military, every year, y'all by all have to levy the military that the school district approves. Y'all can't change that. So a large portion of property owners, uh, tax bill that comes in, that they may not be too happy about is generally from the school district.
And we collect the taxes on that too.
Yes, ma'am.
Just want to make sure you're right, but no, there's things now.
Dr. Finney, is there anything else you'd like to say with this?
This is all Owens with Randy James, um, uh, who, who will be financing this. And that, as, uh, Mr. Britt said, if you remember, we approved in the, I think the November 2019 referendum, to be able to sell bonds to accrue $26 million in, uh, bonds. And we only sold 23.
23, wait, 495,000.
Right, so almost 23 and a half million. Um, so we're just asking to continue to, um, get that remainder, two and a half million dollars, um, to, uh, put towards our athletic facilities improvements that, that, that we're going to.
Are you questioning the board? I would like to make the motion that we, um, approve this resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Question is. Is there a need for a second, second? Are there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that. All those in favor? Many adjourned.